Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, July 7th, 2021 meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session to discuss litigation, the employment history of particular persons, and matters made exempt under federal law, FERC, and matters that I can say. May I have a motion to begin the public session? You have a second? Second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. So I'd like to welcome everyone to the first meeting of our new school year. And I would like to welcome especially our new board member, Kaila Huang. Welcome, Kaila. We're very happy to have you on the board. I'd also like to welcome at our board, sort of our board table, Richard Linden, who is our interim business official. So thank you for your time. Okay, so at this point, we are going to have the votes of office ministered to our newly elected board member and our superintendent by our school district clerk, Lisa Elsner. Okay, we'll start. Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa, we need to do the pledge of allegiance.
Of course, yes.
Okay, so let's rise with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. To the Republic, which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as law.
Lisa, don't. This is true.
Yes.
All right, Kaila, could you please rise and read the votes of office?
I, Kaila Huang, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of the Chappaqua Central School District, according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Mr. Ackerman?
I, Christine Ackerman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of the Chappaqua Central School District, according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Okay, and now I would like to move that Hillary Grasso be elected president of the Board of Education of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second the motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I move that Warren Messner be appointed to serve as vice president of the Board of Education of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year. He shall have the power to exercise the duties of the presidents in case of absence or disability of the president. In the absence of both the president and vice president, Jane Kimmel Shepherdson. Is that right, Lisa?
Yes.
Right. Jane Kimmel Shepherdson is authorized to act in the capacity of the president. It's usually the...
So we've done it as president.
Okay. That's fine. Okay. So that was a motion. Do we have a second?
My second motion.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Hillary, would you please stand and introduce you?
I, Hillary Grasso, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education of the Chappaqua Central School District, according to the best of my ability.
Warren?
I, Warren Messner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education, Chappaqua Central School District, according to the best of my ability.
Okay, and now we're going to switch seats, Hillary.
Okay. I luggage it and I go. Bye, Kaila, too. Bye.
Bye. May I have a motion for the school district treasurer? Let me think.
I move that Lisa Elsner shall be appointed school district clerk of the Chappaqua Central School District 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Lisa, please stand.
I, Lisa Elsner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk of the Chappaqua Central School District, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
May I have a motion for the school district treasurer?
I move that Kathleen Lynch be appointed school district treasurer of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 May I have a motion for school district deputy treasurer?
I move that the assistant superintendent for business be appointed school district district deputy treasurer of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, central treasurer. May I please have a motion for the central treasurer extracurricular activity fund?
I move that Kathleen Lynch be appointed central treasurer extracurricular activity fund of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion for attendance officers?
I move that building administrators or their designees shall be appointed attendance officers for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 May I have a motion for asbestos management plan designee?
I move that Joseph Ramondo be appointed asbestos management plan designee for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 May I have a motion for claims auditor?
I move that Jonathan Ross shall be appointed claims auditor for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion for chief emergency officer and co-chief emergency officer?
I move that Joe Ramondo be appointed chief emergency officer and assistant superintendent for business be appointed co-chief emergency officer for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion for 504 compliance officers, Title II ADA compliance officers?
I move that Tony Sinatus and Ellen Doherty be appointed 504 Title II ADA compliance officers for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion for student disability discrimination compliance coordinators?
I move that Tony Sinatus and Ellen Doherty be appointed student disability discrimination compliance coordinators for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint members to the committees on special education and preschool special education?
I move that the individuals listed on the attached memo from Ellen Doherty and Karen Smith be appointed to the committees on special education and preschool special education for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to appoint McKinney Bento homeless liaisons?
I move that Lisa DeSecria and Ellen Doherty be appointed McKinney Bento homeless liaisons for the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by the New York State Department of Education for the 2021-2022 school year?
I move that the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by the New York State Department of Education be appointed for the 2021-2022 school year. The list shall also include the names of other certified impartial hearing officers requesting to serve in the district. Impartial hearing officers shall be selected, appointed, and compensated in accordance with policy 3030.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the Medicaid compliance officers?
I move that Tony Sinatus and Ellen Doherty be appointed Medicaid compliance officers for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion for internal auditor?
I move that Tobin and Co. be appointed internal auditor for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the payroll certification officers?
I move that the assistant superintendent for business and Tony Sinatus be appointed payroll certification officers of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for property control manager?
I move that Michael Trinick be appointed property control manager of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for purchasing agent?
I move that Michael Trinick be appointed purchasing agent for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for records management and access officer?
I move that the assistant superintendent for business be appointed records management and access officer of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the appointment of school district attorney?
I move that the firm of Shaw, Prossen, May, and Lambert LLP be appointed school district attorney of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the appointment of the school district independent auditor?
I move that the firm PKF O'Connor Davies LLP be appointed as school district independent auditors of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the appointment of school district bond council?
I move that the firm of Hawkins, Stellafield, and Wood LLP be appointed school district bond council for the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the appointment of the school district financial, fiscal advisor?
I move that the firm of Bernard P. Domigan Inc. be appointed as school district fiscal advisor of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for surrogate parent as required by the CSC CPSC guidelines?
I move that Amy Enzo be appointed as surrogate parent of the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year as required by CSC CPSC guidelines.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for district Title IX coordinators?
I move that Andrew Porcellia, Joseph Greener, Joseph Maza, Carol Bartwick, Tanya Wilson, and James Scoop be appointed district Title IX coordinators for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for district Title IX investigators?
I move that Philip Parkes and Jamie Edelman be appointed district Title IX investigators for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for district Title IX decision makers?
I move that Tony Sinatus and Ellen Doherty be appointed district Title IX decision makers for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for Title VI and Title VII compliance officers?
I move that Tony Sinatus and Jamie Edelman be appointed Title VI and Title VII compliance officers for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for DASSA coordinators?
I move that Tony Sinatus, Jamie Edelman, Andrew Porcellia, Cisco Booster, Ronald Gama, Adam Jonard, Nora Lynn Stewart, Joseph Greener, Nicole Kelly, Joseph Maza, Jessica Rappaport, Carol Bartwick, Deborah Aspa, Tanya Wilson, Ross Cooper, James Scoop, and Alyssa Stover be appointed DASSA coordinators for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for depositors?
I move that the Bank of New York, JP Morgan Chase, Bank of America, Commerce Bank, MFT Bank, TD Bank, DNY Mellon, Signature Bank, Peoples United Bank, and NYLA, the designated depositors for funds of Chappaqua Central School District for the 2021-2022 school year, beginning July 1st, 2021, and then June 30th, 2022.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both?
May I have a motion for investments?
I move that Kathleen Lynch treasurer and the assistant superintendent for business deputy treasurer be authorized to take appropriate action in the investment of school district funds during the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for newspapers?
I move that for the purpose of advertising bids and other legal purposes during the 2021-2022 school year, the Journal News, as the newspaper of record, the Examiner, or the Mirror Times be designated.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for petty cash?
I move that petty cash accounts in accordance with policy be approved for the 2021-2022 school year as follows. Petty cash, superintendent's office, $100; Douglas G. Grantland Elementary School, $100; Warren Brook Elementary School, $100; West Orchard Elementary School, $100; Horace Greeley High School, $100; Robert E. Bad Middle School, $100; Seven Bridges Middle School, $100.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the treasurer's bond?
I move that the treasurer's bond in the amount $100,000 is executed by NYSir be approved as to form insufficiency for the 21-22 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for data protection officer?
I move to appoint Joshua Caldwell-Walk as data protection officer for the 2021-2022 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Okay. So, yes. We are all ready, although we're in the midst of summer and enjoying the heat, we're getting prepared to the next school year, and we want to welcome Kaila to the board and go through the board committee assignments, which, my excuse, okay. So, the board committee and liaison assignments for 2021 to 2022 school year are, I will be serving on the audit committee, which you'll hear that we all serve on the audit committee, the policy committee, the green committee, and as the Chappaqua Schools Foundation liaison. Warren will be serving on the audit committee, he will be chair in the audit committee, the policy committee, facilities committee, and the chairs committee, the community advisory committee on anti-racism, equity, and social justice. Kaila Huang will be serving on the audit committee, the facilities committee, and the wellness committee. Victoria Bear Tiff will be serving on the audit committee, the communications committee, the community advisory committee on anti-racism, equity, and social justice, or CARES, the health and safety committee, and she will be serving as the Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund liaison, and continuing her work with the Westchester-Putman School Boards Association work as our liaison to that board and as a board member as well. And Jane Kimmel Shepherdson will be serving on the audit committee, the communications committee, the health and safety committee, and as the sports boosters liaison. Did I get that right? Is there any, anybody else who wants to cover on that? And I also just wanted to thank Dr. Ackerman and the entire administrative team. We had the opportunity to participate over yesterday and today in the administrative retreat that was run here at Greeley over the last few days, and we want to thank you for inviting us once again to the administrative retreat and for allowing us to participate in some important conversations surrounding education in a hopefully post-pandemic world and on continuing the district's work on anti-racism and equity. And we know both of these conversations will continue throughout the school year, and we look forward to continuing to work on those issues moving forward. So as this is the first meeting of the new school year, I just wanted to say that we are looking ahead and we're continuing to be excited about the direction the district is moving in, and we look forward to welcoming many new families, as well as reconnecting with the families already in the district. And for those of you who are tuning in, who may have joined the district during the pandemic, this is what we all look like, and we look forward to meeting you and meeting, reconnecting with families who are not in the district and meeting new families, so, welcome. All right, David, are you ready to thank Hillary? I also am getting ready to set up the community update. I just want to take the opportunity to thank Vicki for her leadership last year. She's moved to the end of the row. The superintendent and the board president, we've worked together a lot, and it was probably one of the most challenging careers of my, challenging years of my career, and Vicki, I really appreciate all your support and counsel and guidance over the course of 21, 20, it was very hard, so thank you so much. And thank you, Christine, you've been an incredible leader, and you've shepherded us through really unprecedented times, so we all thank you very much, as well, and the entire, the entire team, thank you. And Hillary, I look forward to talking to you on a regular basis. Great. Okay, so we have some community updates, pretty concise this evening, but because we're meeting during the summer, we usually don't have presentations because we know that families are traveling and people are in the midst of their summer rumpel. We do have some important appointments tonight that we want to talk about, so first, I want to thank Tony for working hard with the community of stakeholders to be in a position where we're appointing Andrew Lennon tonight to the leadership team. He's going to be reprimanded to the Board of Education, who have all been involved in this process, to be our next assistant superintendent for business. As you know, John Chow's retired, he's here as an interim, and we're fortunate to be able to welcome Andrew to the team on August 9th. He has a wealth of experience, he's been assistant superintendent for director for business in Westlake, in the whole Central District, and in Mount Pleasant. He's been assistant business administrator at Austin, he's been a treasurer. He is really excited to be a part of our team, he was able to participate in our professional learning experience yesterday. He also has significant financial experience outside of the field of education that he brings to our district. His references were impeccable. Tony and I had the opportunity to visit with his, with his team in the Mount Pleasant School District, and they couldn't say enough about his expertise, his commitment to students, and his overall work ethic. So we're really excited to welcome Andrew to our district, and he will be at our next Board of Education meeting on the 11th, so we look forward to having him here. And we also are in a position where we'll be recommending our new assistant principal for Seven Bridges, so, Tony.
Thank you, Christine. So we're excited to be recommending Jessica Rappaport for the position of assistant principal of Seven Bridges. Jessica comes to us from White Plains, she's currently a house administrator at White Plains High School, and she's working very closely with students there, dealing with attendance stuff, support services, discipline. She has several years of experience there, she comes highly recommended, including by our colleague here, Amy, from Chappaqua, I have heard you work closely in White Plains. Prior to being an educator, Jess worked at CNN, and we learned yesterday during her retreat that one of her assignments was learning how to swim, so she did go to explore underwater and all that, pretty impressive stuff. Also a former English teacher through middle school and high school, so really excited to welcome Jess and G., and you, who will start next Thursday with us from Chappaqua.
So I just want, just wanted to continue, I just want to continue to update the community. We don't have any further guidance from the State Department or the Governor's Office regarding home instruction, but our family should continue to plan as if all students will be returning to campus starting September, so again, I don't anticipate that we will have a legal option for families, but we haven't received any initial language from any body that provides oversight for us to give us guidance on how we're supposed to plan forward. Initially, the board of regents have shared that they anticipated making decisions around home instruction at their July meeting, but since that time, the governor has come out and he has used language regarding home instruction, so there's really lack of clarity on what we will learn within the next coming weeks about home instruction, but as soon as information is released, I'll share with the community. Just this afternoon, we received from the Department of Health some new mask guides, and while I need to process this more with our physician and with our attorneys tomorrow before we send out a communication to our families, it appears to me from my first read that moving forward, that masks inside for students will be optional, so if that is in fact the direction that the Department of Health has provided for us, because to me, this read is if we are able to mirror what camp policies look like for kids right now, we'll be sending out that updated information to the community either tomorrow afternoon or Friday, but as of right now, we're not making any adjustments, I need to take a little bit more time to process this and make sure that I'm talking accurately. I want to share on the agenda tonight, the Chappaqua Schools Foundation is donating an additional $225,000 to support the Sustainability Research Center. Really, so actually, the Board of Education has made substantial donations in order to support the facility, which is under construction over the summer, so we're really excited and honored to accept this grant from the foundation to help support this work. And then on the agenda, the Horace Greeley Football Association has donated various types of equipment to support the football program, so we thank them for their generosity and their support of our football team. So that is the end of our superintendent report. I do have a few pictures of our retreat that Tony and Adam had worked collectively with the central office team to support, or our administrative team and our Board of Education team, and we'll thank them for the experiences that they were able to, and opportunities they were able to provide our leadership team. And that concludes the superintendent's report. And that concludes the superintendent's report for the evening.
It brings us to the public comment period. We welcome public comments, and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may also be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion with themselves regarding the comments presented. Seems we have no public comments. Okay, that brings us to approvals and ratifications. Can I have a motion to take 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3 together? These are the minutes of the June 14th, June 17th, and June 24th meetings, respectively.
I'll move.
I second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please.
I present 7.1 instructional for your consideration.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 7.1 instructional.
Title II. All in favor? Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I present 7.2 non-instructional.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 7.2 non-instructional.
I second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This brings us to our consent agenda, which is under eight today. The use of consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of our time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda, may indicate, and that item will be considered and voted out separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. So can I have a motion, our consent agenda tonight covers CSC summaries, car allowances, and sort of emergency provisions for coverage in buildings should be principal of the building not be available on any given day, as well as indemnification provisions and retainer agreements with our auditors and our attorneys, as well as a grant that Steve just mentioned from CSF for the Sustainability Research Center, it approves our transportation contract, and also a roofing repair, as well as competitive bidding process.
I have a quick question about item 8.17, about driver's ed. Is this the first time we are using this new, is this a new school for us? I know that we normally had a contract with a different...
We have to do a moment, then. We have to do a moment.
We're already... We did not?
Not yet.
Because, because we... Oh, I thought you did, my apologies.
No, sorry, so why don't we do that? Why don't we move the consent agenda, which covers items 8.1 through 8.20?
I will move the consent agenda.
Well, I have a question about doing that first, because we have an item 8.1...
I second the consent agenda.
Okay, okay, thank you. So Jane, you had a question?
Just a question, if there was any information about the driver's ed, do we know anything about that?
It was a bit of work.
It was a bit of work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want, Rick, did you have anyone to add? Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Do you have other questions?
I have a question.
Motion passes. Under nine, we are acknowledging contracts under Board Policy 6085, purchasing and bidding, so can I have a motion for items 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3 to acknowledge those contracts?
I will move items 9.1 through 9.3 acknowledging the contracts as stated in the agenda.
I will second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, under 10 facilities, we are acknowledging change orders. We're acknowledging the change order approved by superintendent concerning the Greeley High School and the Chappaqua Library. Can I have a motion for 10.1?
I'll move 10.1.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so then item 12, under organization, says that under 12.1 is the annual affirmation of all policies previously adopted by the board, which basically means if we've adopted this previously, we still think it's good and we're re-adopting it for the current school year. So can, I will move item 12.1.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
As with all policies, from here, we can make changes in any policies, the new policies.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that brings us to notice of future meetings. So our next meeting will be Wednesday, August 11, 2021, at 7:30. It is noticed as of now to be here, stay tuned. We may, we will be in Greeley. We may move the room, so if you're coming in person, just check closer to the date. And, but we will be in this building, we just are evaluating whether we can return to our previous location of the academic hours. That will be the meeting where we operate the tax warrant, and after that, Tuesday, August 31st, at 10:30 a.m. for the first day of school. So can I have a motion to adjourn at 9:50?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.